Dear Nick, agenda item is to review foreign articles in the town meeting.
Yes.
And the finance committee decided that they would like to hear what these capital articles and what is being put forth. And rather than have to have any components tell us very voice. So I think we would come here and ask our questions now. So Meyer and I have present.
Dave Byrne and stuff.
Byrne is on the screen. So that amongst the one forum.
Sean is too. Just wait.
John, so we have a, we have a forum. So that being said, all the meeting in the finance committee's order can seven sixteen, seven seventeen.
Okay. All right. Next, we have capital articles presentation VPW director.
Chair.
Yes.
Do anything on the.
No, that's just big.
So it's just a discussion. I have as the last item, just to review in case we wanted to have further discussion. Because it's whether or not we want to keep it on or take.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So the DPW, thank you for seeing me this evening. The DPW has a few articles for town meeting. Please, the board, I'll run through that. First one is a replacement truck, one ton dump for the highway division. If the board recalls two thousand eleven, DPW purchased two two thousand and eleven one ton dumps. These are the trucks that are utilized the most in the public works department. They're daily drivers. During the winter time, they pass down during the summertime, they're hauling asphalt, going around pulling the compressor or whatever else. They're the most used pieces of equipment. We replaced one last year. And the reason I didn't replace both of them is because I tried to stagger the replacement. I don't like replacing two trucks at once. It gets expensive. So we held on to one. This year would be the year I would ask to replace the second two thousand one ton dump. And this is a replacement. So the other truck would be either auctioned or traded in whichever brings the greater value. Has one hundred and eleven thousand four hundred eighty-one miles. Any questions on that one?
Not for me. Not for me.
The next article is well trucks at the same time. So in the water division, we are asking for the same thing, except this is not a replacement. This is an addition. Currently, your water division has six positions and three trucks. One of them is a multi-service truck, but it's not really set up to handle pump station repairs. Over the last several years, we pulled the homes coming online, and now we're looking at governor's landing. We're doing a lot more in the ground pump stations that require more maintenance by us. And so one of the things that we need is the ability to pull pumps out of manholes and other pieces of equipment that are heavy. So this truck is designed to be similar to the one-ton dump in the highway division, except the body won't be a dump body. The body will be a utility body designed to hold equipment, the special apparatus for doing their job. It's a way of the maintenance crew going out on the road and taking all their equipment with it. It'll also have a lift gate, power lift gate, so it's moving chemicals around from station to station in the fifty-gallon drums. We don't have people taking chances on injuring themselves, having something fall on their foot or hurting their back. So the power gate will lift the drums up into the back of the truck. And this is also a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to estimate. And as I said, this is not a replacement. This is an additional truck. Any questions on this?
Any questions from FinCon?
I, you know, I said, you did say it's gonna have, it's gonna have the hoist on it.
It does.
And it's, and this is creating this, the funding on this is the.
Sorry, sir.
No, no effect on.
No effect on the tax rate. Or the user rate.
Right. Anybody in the finance committee have any questions from Dennis?
And Los Angeles up there.
Steve, John?
Nothing for me.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you, man. Thank you.
The next item is for the DPW is requesting five hundred thousand dollars to complete the construction rehabilitation of Fisk Ave. So as the board is familiar, we recently did the AC water main project. Roughly eight hundred thousand dollar project without engineering, with engineering was a little over a billion dollars. And that project is just about complete with some springtime punch list of moving and seeding and patching that needs to be done. The next phase of the project is to engineer all of this, which we're in the process of doing right now using chapter ninety funds. And then the construction aspect of it is a full depth reclamation of the road, including all of the drainage repairs, granite curbing and concrete sidewalks. Keep in mind, this is where our school memorial school is located. This is going to connect one forty to Hartford Out North. So this, this is a very important road to have a good sidewalk on, which is why we went with granite curbing and concrete sidewalk. So the total project is one point eight million dollars. And we've been saving chapter ninety money and saving some of the towns money. And between the two, we have about one point three, one point four million dollars. And it's a one point eight million dollar project. So I'm asking for the additional five hundred thousand dollars to combine what I have in chapter ninety currently. And what I have in the town funds currently to complete that.
Questions?
You first.
Yeah.
Finance committee, any questions?
Not necessarily a question, but just a comment.
Yes, sir.
We do have traffic that goes up and down Fisk Avenue at quite a rapid rate. Since we have the police chief here and yourself make a point of putting in signage that would, you know, say what the speed limit is so that we can try and maintain the speed, I guess, the best statement. We have a lot of the children walking up and down that street or crossing the street. It would be helpful because a lot of the commuters are cutting through and they do come through at pretty rapid rate, probably well over forty miles an hour.
It's a good point. And we asked through the chair.
Yes.
We had asked our engineers when they're doing their engineering of that road to consider traffic calming measures to the greatest extent possible. Simply because it is a country road between one forty and Hartford Out North, and it's the school system straight there.
Is that included fix on the strong rain?
Yes.
Is, is there any best practice or data around the types of curbing for, it's like, I know, like vertical curbing. But like, if you try to pop a bike up onto that, you're more likely to fall over. So I don't know if kids are riding bikes to elementary school or like, is it the sloped granite curbing or the vertical curbing? And does it matter? Or do we, I don't know if there's any.
Granite curbing is always slow. It's not always vertical. The only type of curbing that has a slope to it is by two minutes, which is asphalt. We do K-Cod curbing.
Yeah.
But it's, it's not really conducive to that. You wouldn't do that with a concrete site. It wouldn't match. You know what I mean?
I'm just asking about the safety thing. I don't have any idea. So.
But we'll make sure that all of the entrances, all the crosswalks, every place where the bicycle would go on and on, where it's supposed to go on and off, are done correctly.
Yeah.
And we'll be A G compliant. Thank you.
I'm good.
Yes.
All right. Sean, any, anything on this?
Nothing for me.
Thank you.
Okay.
We have a question over here. I hope it's available in our meeting.
I was just gonna ask, are you any chance that there may be grants available? Setting even.
Sorry, grants?
Grants.
Not, not a war for this project.
For any of them. Oh, that you just.
No, not for bad, not for what I'm doing for this. The next item is our annual road management appropriation, which we have talked about many times over the past several years. Several years ago, we were on track to try to get our road surface ratings up to seventy-nine or eighty. You recall the last time we had a inventory done of our streets and an assessment, we were around sixty-nine. They were trying to increase our roads and we had a couple of really strong years of paving where the town appropriated five hundred sixty thousand dollars. And then we had some shortfalls over a couple of meetings where we were not able to raise that type of money. So we've fallen behind and I'm asking for the six hundred thousand, which is where we should be this year. If we were doing the escalator that was recommended by Beta when they did the original road management program. We can't make up for the years that we've lost. Those are lost, but this will put us back on track to start. Take this combined with our chapter ninety appropriation to stop paving the roads like we were paving three years ago. And that's what the six hundred thousand is for.
Questions?
Big fan of paving, as you know. Thank you.
I don't think anyone would complain about roads being improved. No, I don't think so.
Okay. Thank you. Sean, Steve?
Nothing.
Yeah, nothing, nothing for me, Paul.
I think it would be, oh, I think that was personal was done by Eric O'Bara. He used to be the DPW director. That would be quite a mistake.
The one that I'm running off of, if I may, through the chair, the one that I'm running off of now is twelve.
Yeah, well, this, like you said, this one's.
The last capital item that I have is for our storm water management. So the DPW is responsible for doing our annual report and maintaining all of our storm drains here and back. But the actual regulations fall underneath the conservation commission. And we are due this year to update our regulations to meet the standards of NFT's National Discharge Lamination System for this year. So there is a proposed stormwater regulation, which I'm going to be presenting to the conservation in the next few weeks for them to vote on it and have a public hearing. And then that triggers the bylaw and that's what this article is for. It'll allow the town to ratify the bylaw and make everything official. And if the board ever wants to peruse the regulations and it's rather large, but this, it's all here.
Have you perused them?
Oh, yeah.
And Dennis, we trust.
Most of it has to do, if I may, brief explanation, most of it has to do with post-construction regulations, which we haven't touched upon in the last five years. So it takes an awful lot of smaller developments into consideration. Right now, an acre above triggers our rules. This will make it stricter and give the conservation board a little more authority to weigh in on development. That's it. And it just, thank you.
No questions? Al?
I just want to state on the record that I think this gentleman does an amazing job and I don't think we've had as good as a DPW director since a friend of mine used to be the in Durham and Tetro. And this gentleman does a awesome job. I want to thank him, Mr. Sisson.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Caught me off guard on this.
Good thing you were sitting down.
Sorry, it was a trouble. Through the chair, that is all of the articles that I have. The other thing I could do tonight, if you would like, is a brief overview of the budget, if you wish. Okay, it's up to you. There's not a lot of changes.
Adam Chet, if I might interject before this, but a year ago, the esteemed DPW director said, if you agree to provide me with this roadside loan, the two hundred and six thousand dollars or whatever that was, says, I will reduce the DPW budget by twenty-five hundred dollars.
Twenty-five thousand.
Twenty-five thousand, I'm sorry. And I said, yeah, sure you will. It'll be some other place. Well, the gibble devil is due. If you compare the numbers he has, the request for this year is twenty-five thousand dollars less than the prior year.
So are you reading crumb?
When you know, he is a man of his word.
Yes, he is.
But I think that's sufficient.
Thank you. On that note, the highway division annual operating proposed budget is one million, one hundred and forty thousand, nine hundred and seventeen dollars. This is actually a decrease twenty-four thousand dollars from last year. And there's a couple of factors for that. One is there's a one and a half percent raise for non-union. We didn't consider any increase for union because we are just about to get ready to do our union negotiations for a contract that expires the end of June. And then there's a reallocation of funds in the administrative part of the budget between water and wastewater and highway. And we have two positions in both of these, on all three of these divisions, and they are shared. And we were unable to fill one of the positions all year. So my esteemed assistant, Mr. Taylor, who does a wonderful job, did it all. And unfortunately, we paid him all out of the highway division and it's really not correct accounting, where he's doing water and wastewater. So this corrects that. This makes, this makes the changes between the, where the work is actually being allocated and the funds are coming from. And that's what this does. And then you'll see this change in the water and the wastewater budgets as well. For expenses, the only change is, is a twenty-five thousand dollar reduction in hiring an outside contractor to do roadside mowing because we have our own piece of equipment. Thank you very much. And that's it for highway. Everything else is exactly the same. It is a level service budget. For parks and cemeteries, it is a three hundred and fifty-three thousand, five hundred and seventy-five dollar budget, which is almost exactly the same as it was last year. It is a point zero six percent increase and that is representative of the one and a half percent for non-union. Everything else stayed the same. For the water budget, it is a one million, fourteen thousand, five hundred and forty-three dollar proposed budget, which is twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and forty-eight dollars, a two point eight six percent increase over last year. And the increase is the reallocation of the personnel that I discussed and a one and a half percent for none. And then under expenses, we have an eleven thousand dollar increase. And that comes from three different items. There's a ten thousand, nine hundred and thirty-seven dollar increase for health insurance, a two hundred dollar increase for Medicare and a thirty-five dollar increase in unemployment compensation. And then for wastewater, we have a proposed seven hundred and fifty-six thousand, three hundred and eleven dollar budget, which again includes the reallocation of the wages for the one position, for the two positions, one and a half percent increase for non-union. And then in other expenses, kind of the exact same differences that were in the water. You have an increase in insurance costs, a slight increase in Medicare, payroll taxes, and a really small increase in unemployment. That is the budget.
Any questions?
Sean's here. Awesome. Thank you.
Any from FinCon?
Steve, Sean?
None for me, Paul.
And then, or Dennis?
Nothing for me either.
Just had one reminder. We do have a placeholder for snow and ice.
Yes.
We still have not expanded our budget and I'm probably, yeah. Um.
Spring.
Maybe I even should have that, but we do have a placeholder. So while we may see it on Warren, you know, it's always something, we don't need it, we pass over or revise it as we get closer.
Thank you.
We have this close. We got it.
Thank you, Mr. Westgate.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is capital, public safety capital articles presentation. Public Safety Director and Vice Chief. He must have got a call.
So looking at the capital items. I'll say a couple. Hey, you want to round up here? The first article is a second police cruiser and that's sixty-five thousand. We had I just planned many years, every other year we replace a second cruiser to keep the fleet miles down. So that's sixty-five thousand. The cost of cruises has gone up about ten thousand dollars in the last year, fortunately. So that's recollected in there. So right now we have three vehicles that are over a hundred thousand miles. One is being replaced this month, waiting for that to come in from the, the previous budget and we'll be replacing two more in FY twenty-five. This is any questions?
Who's a replacement?
Who's this applying? MHQ or what's?
So it's colonial right now. So it's either colonial government or MHQ, what I think is actually, we take it over by somebody else. So it's usually the same.
Government.
Yes. So we buy them under state bid. So one company has the Chevy bid, one has the board bid. Any other questions?
No.
Yeah.
Okay, the next item on the capital budget is police station cell block plumbing repair replacement. That item was earmarked at sixty thousand dollars. We're going to look to move that to the fall. We need some additional time to get some more cost estimates, really find somebody that is interested in doing that job, which has been difficult to find. So we're not confident in those costs at this point, so we're going to put that to the fall. Same scenario with the next item, which is the fire drain repair through Zara, one hundred and one thousand. That may have a larger scope than we originally thought. The problem with that drain is it is the, the metal drain has deteriorated and we need to adjust the slopes coming into the drain to keep soft from sitting there and deteriorating drain. We also need to look at the water and oil separator as part of that system to make sure that we're capturing everything that needs to be replaced. So we have some concerns that, that one hundred thousand dollar estimate is not sufficient. So we need some more time to go through that and bring that back in the fall.
Okay.
We also have to do the, we don't know shop drawings, the shop drawings, but it's in close proximity to the rating floor. So we have to do some tests. And so we, we need to investigate that further to make sure that we have the true cost.
How's that building? Eight, twenty-nine?
I think twenty, twenty to twenty-five, no, she's like.
Yeah. I figured that, it's pretty awesome. Oh, yes, thank you.
The next item we have is the fire department engine one refurbishment and that's earmarked at a hundred thousand dollars. So that, that engine one is a nineteen ninety-six Pierce class A bumper foam unit. It's actually in very good condition for the age of the piece. The refurb will address areas of corrosion, framing, suspension areas, chassis, body panels. Right now, they're scheduled to go to one of our vendors on March thirteenth, then to go over thoroughly and give us a good cost estimate. After refer, they should give us an additional ten years of service. Replacement cost for that piece would run somewhere between one and one point two million dollars. So I think it's a wise investment to, to, to refer this and get another ten years of specific.
So, I'm all set. So.
Oh, there was. Sean, Steve?
Nothing for me. Thank you.
Yeah, nothing for me either, Paul.
Yeah, the last capital item is the message board replacements, the two message boards that we have for emergency management. If you have seen me around town, you can see that they are quite outdated, having difficulty with replacement parts and keeping those running. And they should be, they are approximately twenty years old. Cost of replacing them, two of those units is approximately forty-one thousand dollars. So we're looking to replace those so we can have those more messages. I believe the water department will have its own message boards, so we'll have a complement of three message boards.
Sure.
Any questions on the message?
Just a question for the DPW side coming up. Answer price, fun?
I'm not purchase one this year.
Oh, next year?
Yeah, okay. The fall, I'm going to put that. But yes, it would be enterprise.
Thank you.
We are all set with the capital items, budget review. Start with police communications. Yeah, FY twenty-five budget for police is two million, seventeen thousand, one hundred and one dollars. That's an increase of three thousand, five hundred and twenty, around the FY twenty-two, four amount. That budget does not include the collective bargaining agreement that is due to be negotiated for FY twenty-five. The following increases are included in the budget, so one and a half percent cola, anticipated merit raises for non-union personnel, step increases in wages for union personnel that are in the current CBA. And there's also a two hundred and four thousand, two hundred and fifty dollar fee reimbursement through our expected states. They want nine one one support inside, that is included in those budget markets. On the expense side, it's a ten thousand dollar increase when it includes a replacement for the fleet. As a reminder, there's one in the budget, it's one capital. Any questions on the expenses?
Okay, very, the questions. Sean, Steve?
Not for me. Thank you.
Yeah, nothing for me either, Paul.
Thank you.
On the revenue budget, there are a few items pretty consistent. The previous years, sport at seven grand, and it's two hundred and four, two fifty. I want training grant, twenty-five thousand dollars. A regional nine one one fee that Hope Dale pays to, to us, regional dispatch of twenty-three, five one five. The vending up in school resource officer fee of thirty-five thousand and a B P T school resource officer fee of sixty thousand. Speed communications budget.
Okay, John, Steve, I don't know, still, you are okay with this?
Yes, sir.
I'll go.
Okay, we got to fire and EMS. The FY twenty-five budget for fire EMS, one thousand, three hundred and eighty-one dollars, nine, one, one thousand, one million, three hundred and eighty plus. You're getting out cheap there.
Should have seen Mike's face.
We could, yeah. It's an increase of ten thousand, seven hundred and thirteen dollars from FY twenty-four. Three hundred and seventy-one thousand, six hundred and eighty-eight dollars. That doesn't include the collective bargain agreement that is due to be renegotiated. And also any increases in classification cost for next year. The impact. The following wage is have been included, one and a half percent cola, this bit of member increases for non-union personnel, step increases of wages that are required under the current CBA. On the revenue side, it's expected that we'll receive, it's two hundred and sixty thousand in the, in the budget and Kenny likes to to budget that very conservatively, tracking right now of two ninety to three hundred thousand aside for ambulance speeds. So we anticipate that trend to, it's good. We do have to probably come back at a later date after CPA is done, talk about investing some additional money into overnight coverage. So right now we have a paramedic that's in the station twenty-four hours a day. The E N Ts are responding from all. My next step is what I'd like to do is have an E M T call for D M in the station at night to get the ambulance sooner, quicker now, nine P M to seven A M. 9:00 PM to 7:00 AM, which is approximately about 20% of our calls. Obviously, we're drawing the day in early evening where 80% of the calls come in, but we'd like to increase service time. So we'll be making a future presentation into those costs in revenues and how that all works out. Any questions on fire EMS?
I, I do, I. Chief and I have talked a couple of times about, about the, in order to amount of grants we're doing, 206,003. My question is, do you, are we getting any money out of these calls now? Say, some of them maybe messes up. I mean, if we don't transport, we can't build. Right?
That's correct.
So just.
So without getting into too much detail, some of the people that are servicing at that location do have some sort of. So not be in that facility. It is challenging. It is driving up our calls of the leak buyer because any of those calls are very complicated and take some time and patience at those costs. So we have been tracking those calls. So significant increase, especially on weekends, and trying to work with the company to take a look at what their staffing is on the weekend and see if that's contributing to the calling numbers that we're setting. So there's a lot of factors there, but we are certainly discussing that.
No, I, I, I understand your rules and I'm going to, but my main question was, we we get to pay for these calls. Again, if you don't, if you don't transport, you know, we don't, we can't build, so.
Our revenues are usually a couple months behind, so we'll see that probably as a factor. Increasing, but certainly time consuming to take.
And, and tying up your resources as well.
So that will be, there'll be some, some future meetings with that group to talk about response, their ability to manage clients as well.
I think the town has to keep in mind, and as the town grows, all facets of, you know, commands on all of them, just common denominators losses. We have a, seem to be a fast growing over 55 age group, which we haven't done, studied to see how they've impacted our runs, or it's definitely been an increase in calls also. The one thing, keep our fingers crossed, we're going to get a nursing home. That's what drives your call volume to the roof for a assisted living facility. That really puts a tax on those communities because of, they can be, uh, talent ambulance is usually get taxed with the first wants to say. To keep my point, there was an article a week or so ago in the local news that talked about the impact of medical services on the, in the local areas. Franklin has put on a 30 ambulance during the daylight hours to cover the increasing number of calls that they have picked up. So it's not something unique out there. It's everywhere in the EMS, fire EMS.
And I think we talked about this when we did our presentation a couple of years ago, about the service, about our population, aging population, 55 developments, and how that's going to continue to drive the need to the, so it's, it's not unexpected. So, fire EMS? Okay, last one is emergency management. That budget is level funded. That's only, it's $9,500, and that really covers the first 911 system and a smaller expense line. Questions, emergency management?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Sean, Steve? Anything?
Nothing for me.
No, all set, thank you.
No questions? Thank you, Chief.
You both. Thank you for coming. Next on the agenda, we have land acquisition articles for the land stewardship. Good evening, Bill.
Good evening. I have mass. All right, so the first opportunity I wanted to talk about really is land off the profile. Is most of the land on the east side of Wildwood. The individuals, the listed, passed recently, so we say, has approached us about buying it for open space purposes. It totals 38 acres in Upton, 11 acres in Grafton. The assessed value in Upton is 313,000 and Grafton is 6,000, which is $8,200 an acre in Upton and 4,000 acre in Grafton. Land in Upton is zones, general business, and Grafton agricultural. This land is essentially completely landlocked. There is private property to the north, whoops, jumped ahead there. Private property to the north and railroad to the east side, and then of course, like wild. So, appraisal was in process. My expectation is it's going to praise that as open space, because there's really no, well, I should say, that's the only. There's only really two uses for it. It's either as open space or as land at the railroad uses. And the road has approached the owners of buying. So, yeah, but it, it is, like I said, it's, it's right along Lake Wildwood. I think for that alone, it's probably, there's value in preserving it. The land in Grafton to the east of it, there's a total of 562 acres of open space. So it will become part of a almost 600 acre open space complex. There's right, there is an access off of Dairy Drive that is available to that land, but I don't believe it includes the railroad. So without that, you're really able to go up to the railroad on either side of the trust. So, and then the town, and then the show for a second. The town bought that piece of land in lavender a few years ago, and it does provide access to the land from the industry. So I'm working with the community preservation committee, I'm meeting with them again tomorrow. But I won't have any firm numbers about how much we might pay for the land until the appraisal comes back. But if it's appraised for open space value, I expect that to be between 200 and 300,000. And I'm expecting a little bit of a raise of 100,000 from other sources, so to the community preservation fund would be about $200,000.
How much?
200,000.
Question? No. Well, I, I guess I do. You said the railroad is first interest. Does a railroad, is there anybody that could trump, if we wanted to buy it, the railroad wanted to buy it? Are there any laws that say it needs to go to the railroad first, or is it just whoever they feel like selling it to?
Well, as far as I know, from that perspective, the railroad has no power to force the owners to sell it to them. And maybe some, they may be able to attempt that eminent domain taking after the fact. But I'm not sure about that. And, and then on top of that, I'm not sure they'd be successful.
Okay, and you haven't seen anywhere on any deeds that the railroad has any claims to it? Because I do know there's property along the railroad, and it's written in some of the deeds that they have read a first refusal if it's developed.
I've looked at the deeds, and I've not seen that kind of, I didn't get it. I was looking at the deeds to see if any of those properties have been deeded basically across and over them. Unfortunately, that land was all bought in 1888, 1889. And some of the arrangements are not memorialized in deed, memorialized in a plan that was created at the time. So I haven't been able to definitively determine whether or not somebody might have crossed them.
And I know a lot of times back in the 1800s, it wasn't, so if you were to buy, say, the parcel that's labeled, I think it says 67 Grafton, it, the right to cross wouldn't be on 67, it would be on the one behind it. I don't know if you're aware of that. That's how a lot of the old deeds run. It's, it's, it's the one you go on to that allows you, and, and so you have to pull kind of everything.
Yeah.
But I just didn't know if there was anything you found for the railroad.
No, I didn't. In the deeds that I looked at, and, and the, um, this shows one, two, three, five parcels. It's actually two deeds. But because Grafton is in the middle of it, it got defeated up for assessing purposes. So I've looked at, essentially, at this point, looking at all the surrounding deeds and not from anything to what, to what, to what you suggested. Admittedly, I was looking for proof that some of us, somewhere, we could have deeded right across something.
Do you have, it's one of the pictures of the full tenuous open space that this would be a part of?
Yeah, actually, there you go. There's some trails on the side of the alleys.
Yeah.
Yeah, one more. So that's the open space.
Oh, I got it, I think.
Yeah, so.
Dairy Drive down the bottom.
Yeah, yeah. Now, unfortunately, land is separated by two properties. And I'm reaching out to both of those property owners to see about the easement to also. Using one confidence or something can be worked out.
To connect this large parcel with these water parcels.
The gas line passes over all of these, all of these parcels, and it's been traditionally, historically used as a pass. I think people cross back and forth readily.
Yeah.
However, I believe how they cross over the railroad. So I, I would like to arrange something, didn't involve.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Paul?
Great. Sean, Steve?
Good, thank you.
Chair, I just wanted to add, I did hear back from the town of Grafton. The Select Board, Planning Board, and Conservation Commission all voted affirmative to support and assist in this number.
I want, what is the CPC hearing?
Well, I'm meeting with the CPC tomorrow night to ask them to schedule a hearing for the first meeting.
CPC's never said no to anything, so.
You can certainly tell me the.
No, no, that's, no, that's. Sure.
Yep.
All set?
Uh, yes, and then, uh, 47 McCaffrey, Charlotte, for sale, it's right next to the Robertson place where we just purchased the conservation restriction. And what we are planning on doing is, we are working with my family trust, and we've raised $60,000 to purchase the land, the backland, so it's about 15 acres. Essentially, the land on the east side of, west side of the book, which is at the riverfront, and then land on the other side, which is on the other side of our druck. So in any case, it's about 15 acres, and it would allow us to connect trails in the Robertson Family Conservation Area through that property. And then there's a town-owned parcel which goes down, is a long sin parcel around Warren Brook, which has some access off of Marion Drive. So you could essentially walk all the way down Warren Brook. And so the ask of the community preservation committee is for $12,500 to pay for the transaction cost, engineering survey, and the conservation restriction baseline report and the cost.
No questions? So?
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill. Thank you for coming.
Great. No other questions? Sean, Steve?
Now, I guess the only question I have is, are there other properties that you guys are, have an eye on for future purchase we should be aware of?
Uh, no. In short answer is no. But we do have a helpful, probably some of my kind of conversation about longer term opportunities.
Thank you. Yep, all good. Thank you, Bill.